Today is Monday, December 9th, 2013. It is 4:00 p.m. If I can get a call and a roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Shirley?
Here.
Commissioner Blinter?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Everyone that's able to, if we could get everyone to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no awards and proclamations today, so we'll go into citizens' forums. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that's not on today's agenda. Seeing no public comments, we'll go ahead and start public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4358, requesting vacation of a 30-foot of platted restricted access on Lot 1, Block 3 of the Airport Industrial Center subdivision. Sub-Item 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 13, 10,722.
Mr. Andrew, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Get your staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayors and Commissioners. I'd start off by pointing you out to the heading on this item. Two things that I would like to correct for your notes as you consider this. In the fourth line, it says we're talking about a distance of 635 feet, and it's actually a distance of 655 feet. That is a typo. And it is supposed to be east of Scanlon Avenue, not west of Scanlon Avenue. So, to get our bearings here, this is Scanlon Avenue. This is Centennial Road, and we are talking about a driveway opening that would be east of Scanlon Avenue. Taking you back to the time of 1988, that is the time that the Airport Industrial Center subdivision was put forward before the Planning Commission and City Commission, and that subdivision comprised 158 acres, and it created 14 industrial lots with internal street access. And that was considered by the Planning Commission on December 6, 1988. They approved the final plat, which went on to the City Commission, and as part of that, the property at this corner was zoned I-3 heavy industrial and was annexed into the city. And this, it was after this annexation that the city changed its policy as far as annexing edge roads. But in this particular case, the city first tried to annex all of Centennial and all of Waterwell Road. It was determined that there was no right-of-way for the south half of Waterwell or the east half of Centennial, and those property owners had not consented to having any portion of their property annexed. So essentially, the city annexed the west half of Centennial and the north half of Waterwell Road. Since that time, the original name of this street was Wertz Avenue. That was changed to Vortex Avenue in 2005. Also in 2005, Salina Vortex relocated their facilities and constructed a new manufacturing facility containing about 125,000 square feet at the northwest corner of Waterwell and Centennial. And there are actually two platted lots here. There's platted Lot 1 here and a second lot here. The property contains little over 16 acres, and it has about 1,200 feet of frontage on the -- John, if you could go back to that, the previous slide. There's 1,200 feet of frontage along Waterwell Road here and a little over 600 feet of frontage there. You can see the two platted lots. These lines here represent the platted restricted access along those frontages. Salina Vortex recently applied for a building permit to construct a large addition onto the west side of their existing plant. And as you can see from the photograph, their property has frontage on Scanlon, on Centennial, on Vortex to the north, and Waterwell to the south. And this is the site plan they submitted with their building permit application, and staff informed them that they could administratively, we could approve adjustments of these two driveways, but that we could not approve a site plan that contained a driveway here because of the platted restricted access. So staff worked with Lee Young, representing Salina Vortex, and on November 13th, a petition was filed and scheduled for today for public hearing. In the petition, the petitioner states that this employee parking area here, existing, which contains 141 spaces, is becoming congested at the north entrance here, and this is the only entrance/exit for the lot. So the petitioner goes on to state that with the expansion of the south parking lot, which additional 43 spaces here, they are anticipating more congestion, more delays, difficulty getting out the one entrance there. They are asking for a 30-foot access opening right here on Waterwell Road. By design, if you look at this, this is the area where trucks deliver and make deliveries, and they would be using exclusively Vortex Avenue. There's no interconnectivity here for that, so there would not be truck traffic that would be able to access the docks or factory entrances. This would be for employee parking. The petitioner believes that having an entrance and exit for employees would reduce traffic congestion at both the Centennial and Scanlon intersections and at the throat of their parking lot there. Along with that request, the petitioner is also requesting consideration of a reduction in the speed limit on Waterwell Road. He points out that traffic entering from Scanlon and Centennial has to rapidly reach 55 miles an hour when they pull out when there's traffic on Waterwell Road, and it is somewhat difficult to judge their speed because there is a sloped hill that extends to the west. So the reason we are here today is because the statutory process used for requesting vacation of restricted access is the same as you would have for an easement or an alley that involves public notice, a public hearing, and if approved, the adoption and recording of a vacation ordinance. So we have gone through and shared with you that Waterwell is a minor arterial street, as is Centennial Road, and that is opposed to a major arterial street such as Crawford, Ohio, or South 9th Street. Other examples of minor arterials are Ash Street running east to Ohio, Cloud Street, and Belmont Boulevard. And according to the most recent KDOT traffic counts, Waterwell carries 2,200 vehicles today west of Centennial and 2,800 east of Centennial Road. This compares to a little over 4,000 on West Magnolia and over 8,000 on Schilling Road west of 135. South 9th Street carries 6,730 vehicles a day south of Schilling Road. John, I don't know if you have my access control map with the restricted access on it. That's the one I guess we have here. So if you could scroll over to the east first on Waterwell. Does it go any farther? So what we did, starting at Ohio, the first property that we have platted on Waterwell Road is right here. This is South Industrial Area Number 2, and that was the site of Crestwood Cabinets. That property was platted in 1994, and in addition to the plat that was reviewed, Crestwood Cabinets did have a site plan. And so the Planning Commission and City Commission looked at both the plat and the site plan simultaneously. This is Progress Drive, which is a side street here, and they do have a truck entrance there. But as part of the plat, this property has about equivalent frontage to the Salina Vortex property that we're looking at now. And on the plat, there's an approved entrance here and an approved entrance here for Crestwood Cabinets. This property across the street was platted subsequent to that, and it's called East Waterwell Industrial Area, and it's the site of Doug Bradley Trucking today. The plat extends all the way over here to a Mirror of Progress Drive that could be constructed in the future. But there was platted restricted access, again, except for an opening here and an opening here that serves Doug Bradley Trucking. There's no plating in here, and you see a number of driveways, but the Phillips Plant has a driveway on Waterwell Road, as does this warehouse. There is restricted access. It was obtained when this right-of-way for the interchange was obtained. This is the Yost Edition, the Old Dominion Truck Facility is being constructed right here. There's platted restricted access along the Waterwell frontage, and then this is Yost Drive. And then if you could keep scrolling over, John. The red represents platted restricted access on Waterwell and on Centennial, and these are the side street openings. So it's about 1,200 feet from Centennial to Scanlon here. And then if you'd like to scroll up, John. When the Salina Airport Authority replatted all its holdings in the airport area in 1998, they did dedicate restricted access along Centennial Road, but essentially every driveway that already existed was grandfathered in as part of that plating. So although there is restricted access markings, these green circles represent places that are access points on Centennial Road. So when staff analyzed this, they looked at the status of Waterwell Road, the traffic counts, looked at what was done with other industrial plats in the vicinity, focusing on the Crestwood Cabinet Site and the East Waterwell Road industrial area. And then we essentially asked ourselves if we had this site plan presented to us at the time of plating in 1988, and this particular design, and we had a single platted lot and not two separate platted lots, would staff have recommended a single driveway entrance midway between Scanlon and Centennial? And we concluded that we would have. And so we did our analysis based on that assumption. And so we also looked to the comprehensive plan, which states that on minor arterial streets, access should be limited by prescribed distances between intersections and limited direct parcel access. So we started with those two parameters, and the suggested findings that we identified in support of recommending the single entrance were the fact that Waterwell is classified as a minor and not a major arterial street. It has a relatively low traffic volume today. Because of the runway and the rural land to the west, it's unlikely to experience a large increase in traffic volumes related to development in the future. There's about a quarter of a mile between Centennial Road and Scanlon Avenue. Mr. Stack and I referenced an access management manual published by the Transportation Research Board that we've used as a reference. Also, KDOT has an access management policy manual, and one of them recommended a minimum of a quarter-mile spacing, which is roughly what we have with that location. If you use the KDOT manual, they recommend a non-signalized spacing of, and I will correct page four, there should read 500 feet at 55 miles an hour and 365 feet at 45 miles an hour. And John, do you want to go to that aerial photo with those dimensions? So when we used, it says minor arterial streets should be limited by prescribed distances between intersections, and the guidance manuals that we went to said that if you are at 55 miles an hour, the minimum spacing should be 500 feet, and at 45 miles an hour, 365 feet. This entrance here fell within those dimensional limits. Also, assuming that the speed limit is reduced to 45 miles an hour, this driveway would be outside the area of influence for these two street intersections at 45 mile an hour speeds. Our fourth finding was that Salina Vortex is a manufacturing use. It's not a retail and commercial use. The use of this driveway will be minimal, except when there are shift changes at the plant, so it wouldn't have the same characteristics as a retail facility. Also is the fact that the way this specific site plan is laid out, there would be no truck traffic or delivering traffic using that particular entrance. The other factor we looked at is if you go from this point here to the end of where this would extend, you essentially have a 900-foot-long cul-de-sac and a capacity of 184 cars with only one outlet. And the city on a dead-end street has a maximum of 600 feet, and this is 900 feet with only one way in and one way out. And then the seventh finding that we made is that restricted access will remain in place along the remaining Waterwell frontage. And so, John, if you could go back to the site plan. There are two philosophical reasons behind having restricted access. In this case, having reviewed this plat in 1988 and written a report, nobody really knew how these lots were going to be combined. Nobody knew what uses would appear out there. And the best thing to do in a case like that is to plat all the frontages restricted access, so then if there is a request, it can be looked at carefully in conjunction with a site plan as opposed to just guessing about the location or how it might be used. And then, of course, the other reason for restricted access is that you never want any access at all. And so staff is very cognizant of decisions and how they relate to other decisions and how they potentially set a precedent, so that is why we have outlined those findings in detail in your report. As far as your options today, your first option, you could deny the petitioner's request, which would mean that this restricted access would remain in place unchanged if you don't think findings can be made in support of a new curb cut. In other words, if you disagree with the reasoning that staff laid out in our report, you could vote to deny the request, and access would still be limited with no options for Waterwell access. Your second option would be to approve the ordinance that is attached to your blue sheet, authorizing the vacation of the platted restricted access in this location with that configuration and dimensions subject to any conditions that you think are appropriate if you think that findings can be made in support of a break in access control in this location. Your third option would be you could continue today's hearing to a specified future meeting date if you would like additional information from staff or you would like to see other options provided for you by staff or the petitioner. So as we walked through this and analyzed it and laid it out with other properties on the corridor, our recommendation as a staff was option two, which would be to approve the request in that location and configuration. Certainly, if you disagree with our recommendation and suggested findings, we'd be available to help you develop alternate findings in support of alternate action. Mr. Stack or I would be available to answer any questions that you have. I would just comment that all of our recommendations are based on a further recommendation that the speed limit be reduced to 45 miles an hour, because these recommendations would not hold if the 55 mile an hour speed zone were maintained out there.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Do we have any questions for staff?
I have one. Maybe a couple. Do road designations ever change over time?
Yes. They're usually, the definitions, we have an official street classification map that we use in coordination with KDOT, because KDOT will only fund improvements to arterial streets, so they're wanting to know what our street classifications are. We use street classifications for right-of-way standards and also for setbacks. You have to have a larger setback on an arterial street that might be subject to further widening than you would on a residential or local street. And it is usually the, a map associated with the comprehensive plan that changes those designations. So there was a map associated with the 1992 comprehensive plan, and there was a map associated with the 2010 plan. And if the character of a street changes or traffic volumes change dramatically or their street is extended, then you might have a change in classification.
The, one thing I noticed that this minor arterial has that other minor arterials do not have, perhaps, is an interstate interchange. And in looking at that and considering that, makes me wonder if we're setting ourselves up to have Waterwell be, go from a minor arterial to an arterial because of maybe increased traffic, not maybe tomorrow, but next year or in the next decade, because of that ability to get off the interstate at Waterwell.
Well, as someone who worked on the grant application for KDOT for that interchange, the primary rationale for that and for the funding of that by KDOT was the industrialization of this area and the fact that KDOT did not think that Schilling Road with all the retail development at 9th and Schilling and also the residential areas between the interstate and the industrial area was ideal for truck traffic. So at least in their minds, the purpose of these ramps was to facilitate access to the south industrial area and also facilitate access, which is primarily going to be Waterwell to Centennial and up. So when we looked at this, a lot of the impact from the interchange is going to be on this stretch right here with the majority of the traffic, truck traffic peeling off and using Centennial here and here, and much less so going west on Waterwell.
How about south Waterwell? What's the potential for that?
South of Waterwell?
South of Waterwell, right.
We have had, they have been on the back burner, but there has been discussions with Salina Airport Authority that if this completely built out and they perceive the demand that they could foresee doing a mirror image of the Airport Industrial Center on the south side of Waterwell Road here, basically at the southwest corner of Centennial Road. And if we were looking at that, then we would do our best to essentially mirror access here with what you had on the other side.
Are any of the businesses east of the interstate surrounded by roads like Vortex is?
No. Vortex is unusual in that it has the four frontages. But John, if you'd like to go to the, either the one larger aerial or the site plan. And essentially, although there are four frontages, these are local streets. Centennial is also a minor arterial with restricted access, but you also have the physical barrier of the required stormwater detention pond, so there's really no ability to take this driveway and send it out to Centennial because of the pond. So essentially, they have three frontages. And again, the, what we're pointing out is that there's restricted access here. Even if this is approved, that's going to be it for this frontage, whereas on these, they do have the ability to have multiple driveways because those are classified as local streets and not as minor arterials or arterials. But the Crestwood essentially has frontage on Progress Drive on the east and Waterwell on the south, but it is not surrounded by streets. This is fairly unique to have streets on all four sides.
Got a couple of questions, and one, first of all, is a follow-up to that, kind of in that same line of thought. And that is, is I'm looking at this and the 1980, or the 1988 date, is that when the restricted access was placed on that?
Yes.
Okay. And then it sat vacant for quite a long time, and then the development, the original site plans were done in 2005?
The original building permit site plan for Vortex was done in 2005.
Okay. Because, you know, one thing, you know, this is at least the second time recently that we've had a restricted access that has come up, and this is about the third in the last, at least, couple of years.
And what we're saying is sometimes that is by design, that you get restricted access until you have a specific development proposal in front of you, and so it doesn't always mean never. It sometimes just means wait.
Well, I think also what it means is that one of the reasons why we want to place that, and I can see that the reasoning behind this access is to say, let's take the traffic and take it off of the main arterials and place it on these side streets. So my assumption would be that this 14-lot industrial subdivision was created in a fashion that hopefully at the time it was site planned was to take into consideration full build-out and what the traffic patterns would be and how that traffic would impact not only just this lot, but the other 13 or 14 that were contained within. Now, one thing on that that strikes me is that the original plat was, site plan was proposed for this, knowing that those restricted accesses were in place.
That is correct.
And so when we make an assumption that, and I get that the two reasons would be that, you know, provide us for an opportunity to go back later and look at it, or the second one would be that you wouldn't, you would want to completely restrict access altogether at no time in the future. That a big part of this, I think, is that thought of let's get traffic off of these main arterials and let's make some of those intersections on a less active road. And so I struggle with the fact that this is a problem that has come about and we should normally anticipate this, because I think if we're doing our planning, and I think when we plan for these restricted accesses, I think that we were doing a responsible planning exercise then so that we could account for future potential conflicts. And I just see when we go back and try to fix these, it's more of a result of inadequate site planning for the particular parcels versus our overall city planning in that, you know, we hadn't thought that this lot might need an additional access. So I'm reluctant to say that we've allowed a series of site plan reviews to take place where this evidently hasn't come up before, and we've kind of left it now to, well, there's really nothing else we can do except kind of go against something that we initially put into place to alleviate the problem that we're now going to be faced with. And it just compounds itself when now we have to even change the speed limit and a number of other things to really accommodate something that I think that we probably thought we were taking care of initially. So I'm reluctant, for those reasons, to say, yeah, let's just put it in there. I'm also, I'm also a realist enough to see that we've got problems there that need to be addressed. Most of them are internal, and I just worry that the more Uh, most of them are, are internal and I'm, I just worry that the more we work towards trying to fix internal problems, that we create external problems in the future. So, um, and, and so that's, that's kind of the main concern I have on those is that it just seems like we, we make, we make plans and we make decisions and then we don't really, as we're reviewing site plans for specific parcels, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's our responsibility, I think it's the, uh, site planners who the consultants, or, or I'm sorry, the business owners hire, that really ought to be taking a closer look at the sites they have to deal with and not put it back on, uh, city staff and, and plant, and planning and, and city commissions to strip away, uh, decisions made in the past that, uh, that hopefully avoid the kind of situations that we're getting into. So, um-
Well, in, just speaking from a professional planner's point of view, the ideal world would be that every time that you had a plat of a subdivision, you had a site plan for how that subdivision or parcel was going to develop at the same time. And so, I mean, you, you can walk through, um, plats like where Lowe's is located, where we had a site plan for, that showed how the parcel was going to develop at the same time we were reviewing the plat so we could really zero in on how access was going to be done. Or in the case of Long MacArthur Ford where they had a site plan and a plat at the same time. The primary difference I see between this parcel and Crestwood Cabinets is that Crestwood Cabinets platted their property in 1994. They had a specific site plan for how their plant, their parking lots, their driveways all were going to be laid out, so the, um, the plat and the site plan married each other. Um, in this case, we had a 17-year time lag between when the property was platted and when we had a specific plan for development. And it, again, it's not, um, that every, every plan or precedent has to be followed, but we had the case there at the northeast corner of Cloud in Ohio where that property was platted in 1979 and it sat dormant for over tw- 25 years. And then there was a specific plan and there was restricted access along the entire Ohio Street frontage. And you could debate whether that was an intent never to have, ever, ever have any driveway on Ohio or because we wanted to restrict access until we had a specific development plan to review that access against. In that particular case, the city commission approved one driveway opening on Ohio that was centered between Claflin and Cloud. And so, the main thing that's, that staff is, was looking at here is if, if we'd have had this configuration and we had this site plan at the time somebody was coming in with a subdivision plat and we were plating this, would we have recommended that this be platted restricted access with this one single opening? And we concluded that we would have.
And I, and I understand that. I, I, I'm just simply offering that perhaps the solution is a better site plan. And so, if you're going to have your restricted access, I mean, it, it's not like we don't have Scanlon right down, uh, east of there or, uh, west of there, and it's not that Centennial Road isn't, isn't right north of there. I think that, you know, it does get into the point of, of, is it, I, I think it's a site planning issue. And I think that, um, the part that troubles me is that we kind of, I, I can see by looking at the plan that the applicant has significant expense tied up in, in planning that's already happened. And, and it just seems that having the access point issue come up kind of at the end of their planning process is kind of almost a, can you help bail us out of this thing versus help us try to plan the most effective way that we can deal with some of this, uh, traffic and parking congestion? So, um-
I guess I, I guess that I just kind of halfway disagree with the fact that, that, uh, that the original idea of the restricted access wasn't the best idea there and that by having Scanlon there and Centennial there, that it was, that it felt like it was adequately served and that, and that somehow the site plan should dictate where the access is versus the available accesses dictate how the site plan occurs. So, I guess that's a chicken or egg thing, but-
Well, I found that I had written the report in 1988 and I'd written this report here and I stated in that report, and I stated it here, and this report is the original plan was for all lot access to be from the internal streets.
Right.
And you can access this lot from the internal streets-
Mm-hmm.
-without an access to Waterwell Road. We simply looked at it from the standpoint that if, if we were looking at this particular site plan with this parking lot arrangement and the length and number of spaces concurrently with a subdivision plat, would we think that that is a reasonable location for a, a well-centered driveway between those two streets on a minor arterial street? And that's where we came down.
One last, one last question, and, and it kind of ties into, I think, what Commissioner Hardy, um, it relates to his question, and that is, um, how do, on, on the last part of here, we put conformance with the comprehensive plan. And how does the future of that road, is it a possible candidate for any complete streets type treatment, uh, in the future?
I think it wa, it was low in terms of the priorities, in terms of gateway or entry streets, but I would think, again, that if you were focusing on that, it would be the stretch between the interstate and Ninth Street and the stretch between the interstate and Centennial Road and much less so as you got west of Centennial. I believe that the, if you were looking at complete streets or impact streets, you would be focusing on this and this. Already today, the, the traffic count is 600 vehicles a day higher on this part of Waterwell than it is over here, and that's associated with this pattern. And I think the same would hold true, um, that if you were looking at Waterwell as a gateway, it's a gateway from the interchange over to Ninth Street.
Thank you.
Dean, kind of following up a little bit on Commissioner Hardy's questions, I want to make sure we, we really addressed the issue specifically. And I think, I think the question is, is the recommendation today is based on Waterwell, the section of Waterwell being a minor arterial street. And you sort of alluded in the, uh, blue sheet to the, the future traffic on Waterwell, but are you saying, is your thought that if, if the development around Waterwell west of Centennial, because that's the area we're talking about, develops as one, would it, as, as a planner, would it expect that you would probably not see the amount of traffic over the next, say, 10, 15, 20 years that would require that street to be upgraded to a major arterial?
I think that was the conclusion and, and most of that relates not so much to this parcel here, but the fact that you have the runway and there are no plans or anything shown in the comprehensive plan as far as this west area being a priority for public utility extensions and things of that nature. So, it's, it's very unlikely that you're going to have large amounts of growth along the Waterwell corridor to the west that would change that to a major arterial status.
And if you had thought that the projected traffic would cause that to be a major arterial, that would change the rec, potentially change the recommendation, but believing that it would not, uh, get to a major arterial, you're comfortable with the break at that location?
Yes, that's why one of the findings, the very first finding, said that it was a minor arterial and because of the presence of the airport runway and the rural land to the west, it's unlikely to experience a large increase in traffic volumes in the future. And I'll defer to Mr. Bankson as to the strength of the findings there, but staff is very cognizant of, um, this won't be the last request for a break in restricted access. So, we're, we try to be very conscientious about making findings that can distinguish one situation from another. And the fact that this is a minor arterial street and the comprehensive plan refers to limited access for minor arterials and the KDOT and the, uh, Access Management Manual both distinguish between major and minor arterials. That is why we would view this differently than if it was West Crawford.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you. We do have Mr. Young here from Salina Vortex, if you have some questions from him.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Young.
Certainly like to ask that you support staff's recommendation. Um, I've listened to the, well, well-reasoned arguments here and, and, um, I wish we had, we were all saying in our development, development of the property, um, obviously in the beginning it was two different parcels. So, I would, I would think then that would argue for maybe different development, different access, that type of thing. I think the larger thing is, is that, um, I might be asking on, on behalf of, of, of all the people that work out at the, uh, airport, uh, area, is that, uh, we all would like to see that slow down out there. So, uh, we'd like the same advantages that Crestwood has on their end of Waterwell Road. Is it, so at the very least, if, if, uh, if commissioners don't decide to allow the, the road, at the very least, the, the, uh, speed limit is reduced to 45. I think if you have a chance to go out there and, and approach Waterwell off Scanlon, you'll, you'll see that, uh, the hill to the west, it blocks a view of traffic and that traffic is not traveling at 55, it's traveling more like 65. And certainly the other, other issue is that there's large trucks, steel trucks and that type of thing from our facility as well as others and gas trucks, uh, nitrogen and oxygen tanks, uh, on those trucks and that enter into that roadway at a very slow entry and you have, uh, other vehicles coming down west on Waterwell, east on Waterwell at 55 miles an hour. And it's, uh, it's, uh, either, somebody's braking, let's put it that way, or someone's speeding up. So, it's, uh, so just having that lower speed limit would be very, very helpful. So, again, we'd like to request that you support staff's recommendation. Any questions for me?
Mr. Young, um, was, uh, there ever any consideration of a second entrance onto Vortex instead of the entrance? I, I, I realize it would be a little more convenient to have it onto, uh, Waterwell.
Mm-hmm.
But it looks like, I don't know, how convenient it would be to have a second, um-
Well, it's-
-curb cut.
It's, it still would result in the 900 feet of, uh, of length to the end of the cul-de-sac, to the end of the turnaround. And I think that's where staff's recommendation was because of, uh, if EMS has to arrive, they have to go the full 900 feet to, to get to the access to the end of the building. So, uh, that's, uh, we, we, we tried, we, we thought we were thinking this thing through and we, we, we think we have. I think we laid it out rather well for least access from, for employees and we've eliminated truck traffic, uh, coming in that entrance. So, uh, we're obviously way ahead of ourselves on, on the, the development of this property and, uh, we're glad to, that we have to. But, um, I quite frankly didn't think I'd, I'd be alive to, to actually experience this project. So, uh, so, uh, we're glad that we can expand and, and grow the company and, and create the jobs and, so.
Um, it's, you're saying this, but the, the primary use of this entrance is for shift change?
Shift change and just sheer 180-some people trying to go out one entrance.
Right. Do you have any handle on what kind of timeframe we're talking about for someone to get in their car and get out to Waterwell after a shift? It's probably, it's probably after the shift rather than-
Well, as a shift change and they, and the over, the timing overlaps, there, there will be that, uh, that, uh, opportunity for congestion coming in as well as trying to go out that one entrance on the, uh, on the north. I don't, I don't have specific numbers for you, no.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would, I would just be speculating.
Okay. Was this employee-driven or is this-
It's employee-driven, yes. Which is good, I guess.
Employee-driven being safety and convenience.
Well, yes.
Safety being number one.
Safety being number one and certainly numbers of employees that, uh, we now have, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this matter?
No public comment and no more questions for staff? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, uh, let me get everything lined up here. Uh, I tend to agree with staff and their seven findings, and I would move then that we adopt ordinance number 13 dash 10722 on petition 4538 filed by Lee Young on behalf of Salina Vortex Corporation and use, uh, using, uh, Commission Action Option 2, which does include those seven findings, uh, recommended by staff.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh.
Just make a comment before we vote.
I believe we already voted.
Well, you may make a comment still, it'd be fine.
All vote aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Just wanted to make a, I'll go ahead and make the point after the vote then, and that is, is I just wanted to hopefully make the point of my vote being that I feel like, um, there's been significant, uh, work done by the applicant and, and, but I do kind of want to make the point that, you know, we, we have these, I, I just hope that we put more, and, and we're having to deal with the ones that we're doing now, and I, and I realize that. But as we move forward, the next time we plat a restricted access on something or that we zone something, a particular zone, that we really carefully consider what we're doing when we do that, so we don't put it on future commissions to have to come back and, and change those things and maybe try to figure out what they were, uh, trying to accomplish with, with their votes at that time. So, and I wish the applicant good luck.
And Louis, and let it be heard that we did have one nay in the middle of the vote. I apologize for the inconvenience. So, the motion carries for one.
There you go.
Moving on to a consent agenda.
Item 6.1 for the minutes of December 2nd, 2013. Item 6.2 authorized the purchase for one ambulance from Osage Ambulances in the amount of $194,693. Item 6.3 authorized the purchase of two traffic signal back, battery backup systems with cabinets from Gady Sales in the amount of $16,800. Item 6.4, resolution number 137052, describing the corporate limits of the city of Salina.
Is there anything that the commissioner would like removed or omitted from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have a correction for the minutes.
Okay.
On item number, on page two, item number 13 dash 0402, after, uh, the remarks of Greg Bingson, um, the, uh, the phrase is county of appeals, it probably should be court of appeals.
Is that correct, Mr. Bingson? Should it be court of appeals as opposed to county of appeals?
I believe that was correct, yes.
Louis, can you go ahead and change the wording on the consent agenda? Would that change that entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would, uh, I'd ask that, um, item 6.3 be removed. Um, I have a couple of, just a couple of brief questions on that.
That's, that's fine with me.
Fine.
You just need to have a general feeling of this.
Yeah, I think any time you have a commissioner that wants to remove an item, that brings it off the consent agenda.
All those in favor of removing item 6.3 off the consent agenda? Aye.
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 All those opposed?
And then we need to go ahead and pass that consent agenda as is. Then we, did we have, we had a motion for that, did we not? Or not yet?
What we just did?
No, no, I thought, I think she was just.
I didn't hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I'd make that motion now then to approve the consent agenda less item 6.3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minus item 6.3. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Onto administration.
Should be on the six three.
Do we have to do that one completely separate since it's, okay. Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Would you like to discuss item 6.3?
Yes, is it, the city is just completing the last phase of our installation of battery backups. We've been involved with this here in a, in a program for a number of years. We have two more locations that we would like to install these units. We have several of the 2013 units that, that are not installed, that we had authorized earlier in the year. Schilling and Royal is one of those locations. Walnut and Phillips, both of those are in the process of being installed at this time. The third location is Mary, or is, yeah, Marymount and Glen. We need to coordinate with the city electrician. He's been off, so we haven't had a chance to, to get with him. But we're hopeful to be able to do that this month. So we should have those three locations installed by the, the end of December. There is one location, Osborne and Cloud, that is on hold. We're waiting for a report back from Kansas Wesleyan University on a traffic study that may affect that particular location. So, but that's kind of the status of where we're at right now. The battery backup units are extremely helpful. They help us to be able to make sure that the intersections are, are powered to be able to work the lights and the pedestrian crossings and all the other systems that we have on those. We work with Gaddy Sales out of Wichita. They are the sole source and they've supplied us in the past with good quality equipment and good service and that. So staff is recommending that we, we continue with the program and complete this by this last purchase. The last two locations that we have to install these is Belmont and Roach and then again at Santa Fe and Ash. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, the, the questions I had that were, were just on the, the last of this year and I figured that probably Osborne and, and Cloud had something to do with the, the stadium stuff.
Yeah, that, that's the only one that's on hold. The other ones, we're hopeful to have those all installed by the, by the end of December.
Yeah, my, my question though is, is on the pricing of some of these, I can see as we go through the years that they kind of, they kind of incrementally went up a little bit, but there was sort of a, in mid, in mid-year here, we did have some that were 37 and some, the last ones are 42.
The, the reason for the increased cost for the last ones and even the ones before were the cabinets that had to go in there is that not all of these required cabinets.
Okay.
And that because we're putting more equipment into these specific locations, we have to actually buy a larger cabinet to be able to put all of the, of the hardware into.
And was that why the two biggest ones were left, last? Because those are actually 8,400 apiece versus the, which is what we're doing now versus the 4,200 each?
Not, not necessarily. I think is that we just, we were prioritizing those locations that we felt had, had the most either problems or, or had traffic. So I don't think it was necessarily because of the, the cost. I think it was based on other factors.
What, what, what would account for those costs then being kind of significantly higher than the rest of them?
Well, like I said, the, the last, the, the last ones we've got right now are, are for the, for the larger cabinets. That's, it's the, it's not only the battery backup unit, those run in the neighborhood of 37 to 4,700 each, just for the battery backup unit. The, the remainder of that cost goes to the cabinet.
Oh, okay.
So the, so there, it's kind of a mixture of battery backup and larger cabinets that we've got.
Okay, yeah, because I did notice that some of these did have cabinets, but it must be a different cabinet in cabinet.
They're not, yeah, one, yeah, they're different, different, yeah, they're different.
I just want, I, I, it just stuck out to me. I, I wanted to kind of get a clarification, but also to say that in, looking at the program as a whole, it just looks like probably going to save significant money down the road with overtime and staff and.
Yeah, the other, the other great advantage to this too is the convenience to the motorists in the community is that we have power outages occasionally is that, and when those lights go out, these things power back up and those, those intersections can still be active. The police department benefits from this as well. They're not being called out there to these different locations and it could be anywhere from one to a dozen different locations that are having problems. You have a power outage and so they don't have to direct traffic until we have a chance to get out there with the four-way stop signs. So I mean, these are, these are really helpful in a lot of areas.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
While we're on the subject, I just thought of another question. You said that the battery cost is $210. Is that per battery or per location?
That is just the battery. If we had to get a, a, a battery, it's not the whole system, but just a, a replacement battery.
And so we have, we'll have to figure in replacement costs periodically for these locations.
That's correct. We've, we've not come to that point yet, but you're right, is that at some point in time, these systems will begin to have problems and we'll need to be able to have those replaced.
So have we had problems with the first ones that we put in?
No, we've not had problems yet, but that, that day will come.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Is there any other questions for staff?
No, ma'am.
Any public comment on this? See, and then I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we authorize the purchase of two traffic signal battery backup systems with cabinets from Gaddy Sales in the amount of $16,800.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign. That motion carries five zero. Now we're on to administration for real.
This time.
This time.
Here we go.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 1310720, amending chapter or article six of chapter 13 of the Sline Code pertaining to public contracts.
Second reading on ordinance number 13-10720, amending article six, yeah, thank you. Chapter 13 of the Sline Code pertaining to public contracts was passed on first reading on December 9th, 2013. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any public comment on this matter? See, and then I'd bring it back to commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 13-10720 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
I wonder if we can have some discussion before we have a roll call vote.
Sure.
I, of course, am very much in favor of equal opportunity and I hope the community out there realizes and may not even realize that chapter 13 is the equal opportunity ordinance for the city. And I want them to understand that we're not watering down that ordinance. We're simply bringing, bringing it in to compliance as I understand it with the state law. At least that's my understanding. I truly believe that when we're up here, we're up here doing and approving a lot of lucrative contracts with contractors and many of them are lucrative for those contractors, that we need to always keep in mind that those contractors need to encourage the hiring of minorities and, and women. And I just want to bring that forward, forward again because I think we can never be vigilant enough. And otherwise than that, I have no problem with the ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Crawford. Appreciate that.
You're always so well thought out. I appreciate that. Every time you say something like that, it just, it makes me feel good to work next to you. It really does. It makes me proud.
It's turned into another one of those up with people meetings. I can just feel it. I can just feel it.
I'm not yelling at anybody, so.
What lovely blazer you have on there, Commissioner.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Item 7.2, resolution number 13739, authorize an agreement with Sline County addressing the prisoner housing, emergency dispatch and related services.
Mr. Franz. Franz. Every time.
Covering both bases, just in case.
Well, as we discussed, the prisoner housing agreement with Sline County, let's just keep that up with people thought in mind. I really don't know what that meant.
You never saw that? You've never seen Up With People?
The, uh, city of Sline and Sline County have a longstanding arrangement to accommodate prisoner housing. Clearly, the city of Sline does not operate a jail. Sline County does. And so we have had arrangements with them for many years to provide that service. From the late 1990s until 2011, we had a, an agreement that required that every year, consulting firm review the previous year's records and determine a prisoner, a per prisoner day cost to be used for the following year as well as doing a true-up for the previous year. That was, resulted in some difficulties because the true-ups were always, you know, kind of a surprise, either revenue or cost, depending on which side of the true-up you were on. It seemed like the reports were lengthy. The, the jail report was, you know, an inch or so thick. Dispatch report was not quite as volatile as this. And it was always a painful time to go through that process with county staff. As a result of all of that, in early 2010, city and county staff decided to try to find a method that was a little bit simpler, perhaps a little bit more streamlined and less costly. The result of that was we established a contract that basically held both parties harmless in 2010 to what we had budgeted for both contracts and also established a methodology for 2011 through 2013 based on the, the budgetary basis costs for the jail and for the dispatch operation and then providing for interim adjustments based on the consumer price index changes from year to year. That contract is expiring at the end of 2013 and thus needs to be renewed. We have negotiated a renewal agreement on the same basis. It sets the fixed fees for 2014 for prisoner housing of $567,168. There's a fingerprinting service, fingerprinting and photo service that Sline County does for municipal prisoners, $12,096. And then the dispatch function, which we provide to the county, is set at $113,684. Net cost to the city is $465,580. That compares to the cost for 2013 of $448,271. I provided in the commission information, I'm sorry, the request for city commission action, history of city costs for jail and dispatch, I should say for dispatch, it's actually city revenues, just a matter of perspective so you can see how they kind of moved around historically. And they've been a little bit more stable the last couple of years. We think it's a fair contract. It maintains the same existing arrangements we have with Sline County. The only change, and I'm not sure how significant it is, but we did change the methodology of counting prisoner days slightly to conform to the way there are other, the other agencies they do business with count prisoner days and to somewhat simplify the process of doing Staff recommendation would be to approve the agreement. I believe Sline County has already considered and approved the agreement. I'm looking at the city manager to see if he knows, but they, I believe they considered it last week. And I'd be glad to entertain any questions at this point.
Is this, it's a very exact number you have in the $567,168. Is that, how has that arrived at?
Uh, we looked, we looked at what the sheriff's cost of, of operating the jail was according to his, his budgetary reports and simply based it off of that number.
And that's excluding the juveniles now? Am I correct?
Uh, this does not include juveniles, no.
And prisoner populations go up and go down.
Yes.
Does this number reflect that?
Historically, well, one of the things we decided is we weren't going to alter the contract amount every year based on populations. Historically, city prisoners have, have accounted for somewhere between 9,000 and 11,000 prisoner days. Capacity of the jail is, I believe, if you figure that it's 100% full all the time, just a little over 72,000 prisoner days and it's running very close to capacity now. So we, we probably average 10,000 out of the 72,000 they provide. And that has been, again, relatively stable. Some years, our share's been a little bit more, some years it's a little bit less, but it has been running at that level for, for quite some time.
So the, if you wanted to get a cost per day, you would divide this amount by 11,000?
Yeah, 10,000 or 11,000. I think that'd be fair. It works out to a little over $50 a day.
Do you know how that compares with surrounding facilities?
You will probably find a lot of variation in that. No, I couldn't tell you today. I, I, you know, I do know that the last contract that we, that Maximus had recommended, the recommendation at that time was about $58 a day. And that was three years ago.
Any other questions for staff?
I have just a couple quick questions and, and that is, is on the, some of the language in this thing and, and just because, you know, I know some of the past joint resolutions and contracts and everything have kind of had, had glitches in them that we've had to since deal with and, and, I mean, hopefully, and I'm sure that, that you've taken a look at some of those, some of the existing agreements that we have and maybe tried to identify some of those problem areas, not just on this one, but on, on other ones and, and my, and so reading through this contract, I'm looking at, under, under the items, number four, the compensation and under A sub dash three, down at the very end, when, when it's talking about 2015 and 16, future years. And that is, is, and there's, I understand there's probably no good way to figure out how to do this, but the amounts in excess of the 5% of the consumer price index, it says if it does exceed 5%, "The parties heretofore shall engage in additional negotiation to determine a mutually acceptable adjustment." Is there any protocol that we use currently to, is there any mediation type stuff or third-party stuff in case we're unable to come to some mutual agreement that it doesn't blow up the, the entire agreement? Is there?
Commissioners, there is obviously nothing formal in this that spells out a process, but I think if, if the CPI dash U exceeds 5%, what I would be looking for is how does that reflect in the actual costs of the operation? And so I'd expect that the county would, the county administrator and the sheriff would work hard to provide information that says, "Here are cost centers, cost issues" and so forth in order to justify anything more than that. In all honesty, I, I wouldn't anticipate. In all honesty, I wouldn't anticipate strict disagreement between me and the county administrator in that situation. I'm not saying it couldn't happen, it could, but we'll be focusing from a business perspective only, and that's it. And so I would expect that we'd be able to come to a pretty reasonable resolution based on good justification.
Okay.
Excellent, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Franz. Do I have any public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 13 dash 7039, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Celine County addressing prisoner housing, emergency dispatch, and related services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Item 7.3, approval of the 2014 SubCIP.
Mr. Franz, again.
Thank you. This is a, one of the processes we go through every year, in that we approve the detailed items that are proposed for replacement or improvement in the following year in our, what we call our SubCIP. These are largely cash financed acquisitions or projects. As you know, it's broken up into a number of areas, building and facilities, for example, and then after the list is approved, staff will go back and work with that and develop the plans or specifications or whatever, and it comes back to you then at the time that there are purchases or contracts to be, to be made. So it said that breaks these out in a number of functional areas, go through those briefly, building and facilities. We have set aside a total of 212,000, 54,000 of that is in the general fund, 146,000 in sales tax, and the water and wastewater fund is $12,000 set aside. This provides for major maintenance and repair of city-owned buildings and other fixed facilities, roofs, air conditioning, remodeling sometimes inside. I believe this year we did the locker room in the police department, so there's some of those sorts of things. Park and Recreation has a segment. This year, this is a little bit different. Typically, this has been the special parks money we get from the state of Kansas, the alcohol tax that flows to the parks. This year, we also included our Neighborhood Service Fund, that is a result of proceeds that we receive for every building permit that is sold within one of the nine neighborhood park areas within the city. It is time for some of those funds to be invested in facilities, and so we have listed that as a separate item in this plan. The result is, instead of the normal $130,000 or $140,000 in facilities, there's approximately $300,000 worth of facilities proposed. There is also a small amount of funding coming from private entities who have committed to cost share on some of the projects with us. I've also added a, we have, the special sales taxes dedicated in part to capital improvements and part to tax stabilization, and we've always included, as a part of this presentation, the parts of the special sales tax that went to vehicles and equipment, and that went to buildings and facilities because they were part of this plan. The other parts of the special sales tax, we kind of kept track of in another way, and what I've done this year is I have incorporated all of the special sales tax for 2014, in this case, into this one document, and I've labeled those items that don't fall into one of the pre-existing categories, just as special sales tax projects, NOC, meaning not otherwise classified. If anybody wondered, I did get asked about that. Streets, traffic control, and ramps, this incorporates gas tax and special sales tax. We have $3,260,000 in projects scheduled this year. I would note that typically, the gas tax runs from 1.1 to 1.5 million, depending on resources we have available. Sometimes there's a little more carryover, sometimes a little less. The special sales tax portion has been substantially bolstered this year. In the past, that's run somewhere between a million and a million four hundred, and we have 1.96 dedicated this year. That is a direct result of your action at budget time to increase some mill levy so that we can put, pull special sales tax out of the general fund supplement into the street Vehicles and equipment comes from a number of sources, general fund, 497,000, sales tax, 315,000, sanitation, 160,000, solid waste, 106,000, and water and wastewater, 431,000. And again, this is largely the replacement of rolling stock, in particular in the water and wastewater area, there may be a couple of fixed pumps or similar facilities also included. System enhancements is water and wastewater, and these are improvements in repair to water and wastewater facilities, manholes, pump stations, probably some line repair and replacement, and so on. Water tower painting typically falls into these categories, just a little bit shy of $2 million this year. Program is within budgeted resources, and as I said, we'll, we'll come back with each of these projects as they, as we get them ready to go, and bids are received, they come back to you for approval. And with that, I think I would stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Franz. Just to, just to kind of pick on something that you had mentioned there about the stabilization, the bolstering of the, of the sales tax and the, and the general fund. Would that generally be reflected if that hadn't been done, and sort of a drawdown of the general fund even further, or where would that typically, where would that typically come? Or, I mean, I know we wouldn't be doing the street repairs
Yeah.
in, in general, but
If, what, if we had not done that, and if we had continued to supplement the general fund with the sales tax, what you would see would be simply not the increase in the street program. General fund would have probably been stable where it is. Now, if you'd wanted to increase the street program by taking sales tax money from the general fund and diverting it, then the balance would have been drawn down further, yes.
Okay.
I don't know if that answered your question.
That did, I just, just as, by way of illustrating that, being able to use those funds in that fashion does kind of help to protect that general fund
Yes.
if we still wanted to take care of those responsibilities. So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Franz. Any public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd bring it back to commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve SubCIP for 2014.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes five zero.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 137056, authorizing an amendment to the consent order and consent agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and commissioners. In 1994, the city entered into a consent agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment to evaluate the nature and extent of the groundwater contamination in the area of our downtown well field. The contamination was believed to have been caused by past dry cleaning operations and from underground storage tanks located at gas stations. Negotiations with KDHE resulted in a consent agreement for the funding of an innovative solution, which included airstrippers designed to remove the contaminants from the groundwater as a part of our water treatment process. The consent decree implemented the remediation plan and was approved by the city commission in 1998. In 2000, the airstrippers were placed in operation. As a part of the consent agreement, it required submission of monthly water summary reports to KDHE. These water summary reports included the volume of water pumped monthly, average daily usage, and the days that wells were operated, so it was a pretty lengthy form, and also evaluated 14 different contaminants at each well. In addition, we analyzed the inlet to the airstrippers and the effluent. These monthly reports were time-consuming for our staff, and a lot of data and information that we had to compile and keep track of. As a result of that, staff requested that consider, that KDHE consider reducing the testing and reporting requirements due to the fact that the contaminants of concern had been reduced to well below the maximum contaminant level set by the regulatory agencies. In a nutshell, the good news is that the pump and treat system that was put in place in 2000 has worked as planned, and those contaminants have been reduced in our groundwater supply to points well below the MCLs. And what we found is, in talking with KDHE, it would take an amendment to our current consent order and consent agreement to accomplish that, and the attached amendment basically has two items. One is transitioning from monthly to quarterly submissions, and the second is it changes our contact person with KDHE. Transitioning from monthly to quarterly reporting will reduce staff time greatly, and in addition will save approximately $16,500 per year in laboratory costs. Staff concurs with the proposed amendments to the consent order and consent agreement, and recommends adoption of Resolution Number 13 dash 7056. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Tasker?
I'd just like to thank you for being proactive in pursuing this, because if we're saving staff time, it's $16,000, 16, over $16,000 annually.
It was
That's good.
A result of thinking about the continuous process improvement, and one item that we could do that would definitely make a difference from here on out, so.
Right, yeah, well done, thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution Number 13 dash 7056, authorizing an amendment to consent order and consent agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign. That motion carries five zero.
Item 7.5, adopt the 2014 business plan for the Sline Bicentennial Center.
Mr. Lauthen? Lou-Anthony Lauthen?
Perfect.
Deon.
Deon.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Mayor and commissioners.
I told you, Smith, Johnson, Jones, those are the only people you hire from here on out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and commissioners. The item before you today is the proposed 2014 business plan for the Bicentennial Center. As part of the management agreement, Global Spectrum and the city worked through staff negotiations to try to come up with that number. Global proposed it to us, and then we work out what we believe would be appropriate, discuss with them, and what we bring for you, before you today is what we are proposing. Give you a little bit of background, a little bit of history. Global has obviously got a better feel for the building after a couple of years of operation in terms of what their programming should be like, what type of tenants they think they can get, how they can best schedule and use the facility as such. Talk a little bit about 2013. The target operating margin for 2013 was $600,996, and they are projecting right now to come in right at 585, so roughly 15,000 or so underneath what we projected, which is very, very, very good. Moving forward into 2014, last year we had, the city commission had adopted a target operating budget of 501,276. Global is proposing the exact same number that was adopted last year. So for 14 to 15, 15 then would drop to 4,000, or, excuse me, $450,149, and the same for Rod has included a table on here under the fiscal note that's probably worthwhile to take a peek at as well. When you look at how the funds are being used and the infusion potentially that can go back into the general fund from the savings on that piece, I think some of that is noteworthy in terms of what is taken from the general fund to supplement those operations, and that's, that's a great increase over what it has been, as you can see from the numbers that are there. We offer three actions for you to consider. First would be to adopt the business plan as presented. Second would be to have us continue good faith negotiations with the Bicentennial Center and Global Spectrum, or third, to provide a different option or alternative. And with that, I could stand for questions. Chris Bird is also here, if you have any specific questions about the facility, first answer.
Any questions for staff? I just have one quick one, and I, you might have said it, and I might have missed it. On the fiscal year 2016, the general fund is the negative 3,343?
Correct. That, that would mean that there would be no money coming from the general fund.
Okay, good deal. So are we giving money to the general fund, since it's a negative? That's where I got a little, that's where I got confused, okay.
How, when's the, how many years have been since that's happened?
Ever?
Never?
I can't remember that.
Yeah.
But I, I think as you get closer to that, you'll probably establish how much of that transit gets taxed. If you want to cap that, that's fine, but that's a, excuse me, a good question to have in front of you in the next
Yeah.
three or so years.
Right, okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, is there anything you'd like to come up and add? We don't have any specific questions, but you're more than welcome to come up and speak. You've done a good job, thank you.
I do. Where are you going? I can't believe you're leaving us. You guys not aware of that? Was that public knowledge?
It is now.
Chris is, Chris is, you're leaving us. You got, you got a promotion, and you're, you're moving up the company chain?
Yep.
We, we do hate to see you go.
Yeah, you've done, you've done a fantastic job. You went above and beyond.
Excellent job. I mean, I know Commissioner Blanchard mentioned he went to an event at the Bi-Center, and one second you're taking tickets, the next you're giving out, you're handing out hot dogs, working the concession stand, and, I mean, that's
And he's chasing tigers out of the bathroom.
Chasing tigers out of the bathroom, you know, whatever it takes, yeah, yeah, right. I mean, it really has been, I, I think this transition has definitely been a lot easier based on you being our contact person here, and it's definitely been a pleasure having you here. I've enjoyed our, few times we've had some lunches and things, and you've kept me up to speed with what's going on, and I don't think we could have asked for a more professional person. I hope your replacement is half the person that you've been for us, and we'll still be pretty damn happy, so
Yeah.
we're sorry to see you go, but glad, glad for your promotion.
It's, yeah, it was just a great opportunity to get closer to home and, and everything, but this, it's been such, such a nice two years, and very welcoming, and I appreciate that, and, you know, I feel like it's in a much better spot than it was, and I have no doubt that it will continue to go forward.
What's your timeframe looking like?
We have a solemn Christmas party Friday, and then I head out Saturday morning.
Wow, that quick?
Yeah.
And your replacement will be here at the end of the year, or are they going to be here later?
Very soon. We'll be interviewing with, with Deon and Jason
Wow.
next week.
That's fast, all right.
Well, like I said, I did get, did cross my mind that it might not be public knowledge, I don't know, I just, you know, I didn't, I didn't know if we'd get a chance to see you again.
I appreciate the kind words from everybody.
Yeah, well, for sure. Like I said, I think you guys have been doing a great job, and you, you in particular, like I said, I don't think we could have asked for a better person, and I appreciate that. And like I said, hopefully the company can send us somebody half as talented as you are, and like I said, we'd still be, we'd still be happy, so appreciate it.
Just real quick, embarrass you a little bit more. I really want to thank you for really taking the extra effort to be a part of the community and, and really taking interest, so we're glad you're here, but good luck to you.
Yeah, no, I'll be back. I definitely want to see this place in a couple of years and
Oh, yeah, you have to.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this?
I'm Tracy Sin at 340 South Connecticut. I have to say, we're losing another good person. He's the hardest working person I have ever seen, from security to hot dogs, greeting people, and good luck getting it in for free, y'all. From security to hot dogs, greeting people, and good luck getting it in for free, y'all.
I've never seen anyone like him.
Well, we're sorry to see him go, that's for sure.
Any other public comment? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the 2014 business plan for the Salina Bicentennial Center.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.6, conceal and carry discussion.
Jason, since I don't have a, or Mr. Gage, since I don't have a blue sheet on this...
Yep.
This is one big happy family here.
Just a quick update, and I don't think there's anything surprising to you, but the city's been going through, excuse me, I'm losing my voice here at the end of the day, but we've been looking at all of our facilities and with the intent of where we believe we can apply some adequate security approaches to utilize the four-year exemption. The exception of that is municipal court, where we believe that we really should fully secure that entrance. We probably should have been doing that a long time ago, but it makes sense to do that. So this is probably more of a benefit to the public to know that that's our intent at that facility, so we'll be working towards a contract for security for that facility. And obviously, this building that we're in today is dealt with through the building authority, so I kind of separate that out. And just as a reminder, the building authority did vote to put together a security plan and to utilize a four-year exemption for this building. But what we're really looking at in all the other buildings are the practicality of being honest and forthright with adequate security. And what that means is if we can't do it, we can't do it because there are exposures if you say you're going to do it and you don't do it. The unfortunate thing is the state legislation, the law now that deals with it does not provide a definition for an adequate security plan, even though it provides a definition for the measures, which is the full electronic monitoring. And so that creates a bit of a quandary for everyone because that's a gap in the law. But we think we have the ability to do that. And there may be some types of facilities that there's not any public interaction or very limited. There's no really employee interaction where maybe we just go inspect something every so often. Those we really don't need to post or not posted today, so we're not really going to spend a lot of time on those types of facilities. But where there's generally a lot of public activity, possibly employee activity or combination of those, those are going to be the ones that we focus on. And so I recognize that you'd like to see us utilize that exemption if we can, so we're going to try to do that between now and the end of the year. So we're going to try to use the commission dates that we have left here, which are pretty few, between now and the end of the year. It's a possibility we may have to have a special meeting at some point, but right now, we're not quite far enough to know if we will and at what point we will need to do that. So we're just trying to get our plans together and make sure they're reasonable. So that's really it, as far as an update.
Right, and it's just a discussion today. We're not...
Correct. Yeah, we don't need any action. At some point, what we'll do is we'll have action to send the list of facilities at which we're going to exempt out of, to the state, and we'll have you do that, but we're not quite ready to do that until we finalize that list.
And this was for all, basically, city, county buildings, statewide. Was there any exemptions in this ordinance?
The law, well, the state law addresses all city buildings, all county buildings, everything they defined as, I guess they call them a municipal subdivision. They look at schools a little bit differently, surprisingly, actually. So primarily cities, counties, and their subdivisions. And so, yeah, it affects everyone in the state. And the intent of the law is really to allow concealed carry in the buildings, really, because it's very expensive to have a security personnel and electronic monitoring at every public entrance, which is, in essence, the requirement. That's why our focus, again, setting this building aside, our focus is at municipal court with regards to that because we believe that that's necessary based on folks that we found, some folks that commit misdemeanors have also committed felonies and so forth. So we believe that there's a reason to do that there. But other than that, it's not affordable for the city. It's not affordable for any city or any county.
What about the state? What have they done on it? I mean, is this just city-county thing? Has the state changed anything they're doing, or have we, do we have any...
That's a good question. I honestly can't speak for the state. I'm not sure. I don't know, Greg, if you're...
Jake Peterson of our office has been providing the legal assistance on this whole matter, and I'll, Jake is here, and I'll have to look quickly to him as to whether he would have a comment on the state situation.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, as far as the measures the state is taking at this point in time, I'm, like Jason, I'm not aware of specific measures they're taking in relation to specific buildings.
I mean, haven't spelled anything separately, like the State House, or, I mean, anything like that?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
I don't believe they're included in the definition of this particular law. I do know the Capitol has electronic monitoring and security personnel. I'm not sure, I know the Supreme Court building, I believe, I believe my experience it does as well. I'm not sure about their other office buildings.
But you think they're exempted in the...
Yeah, this law is not intended to address them.
I'm just curious, because I always like when the state sends down things to the little guys, and then don't follow the rules themselves. And I'm with you, I'm a little curious why schools are exempted because of a honest, trained gun owner can walk into a city-county building, why can't he walk into a school?
Yeah, there was apparently quite a bit of debate on that when they were considering the law. I'm not sure why they look at schools differently, particularly because you see, I mean, some of the mass situations out there have been in schools more so than other locations. So I don't know. It's probably a good question for a legislator that voted for it.
I have a question about the adequate security. I have my, personally just have my doubts about adequate security in terms of having a decal on a door, providing security for the inhabitants of the building. I have a feeling that if someone really is intent on doing us harm, that the decal is not going to be deterrent, probably. And that's probably one reason why we have a police officer sitting in this room, is because of that fact. And so I worry a little bit about how safe we are, we're actually going to be with the decals on the doors, even though we have a policy in place. I don't know what kind of policy we could put in place that would make a difference, really.
Yeah, that's a good point. I agree with you. I think there's two aspects that you deal with here. One is that situation where someone comes in, they don't care if they get shot, they get killed, they get arrested, whatever, and they just do whatever they do. Honestly, that's a very low probability situation. That's what's brought all the attention to this, I believe, but it's truly across the country, a low probability situation. I think the real significant issue is an escalation that can occur with a dispute in a building and what happens with that escalation. And I think that's where the biggest impact is, is to make sure that we address through many means. It could be training, it could be a lot of other things, just how to deal with people and how to report, how to observe, and other things, focusing. I mean, everybody thinks of security as physical, but it's really, it's really part of the mind in how you address people as much as anything. And I think there's a lot of it to that. And quite honestly, in our facilities, we know, we have a history of, we don't have a history of serious violence in our facilities, so we're very fortunate there. So the risks are actually very, very low. But there's a law, and we need to try to meet the intent of the law, and that's what our intention is to do. So when we talk about adequate security plan, obviously, you put the sticker just to tell someone that we don't want you to bring the weapons in, but there'll be other aspects to that plan. And according with the law, the plan is a closed document. It's not subject to public disclosure, and there's a reason for that. There's a strategic aspect to that. But our thought is, is it, you know, if there's a situation, you restrain someone's rights or so forth, maybe there's a situation that happens and there's legal action that ensues, you need to be able to defend that plan in a court of law. And so we believe rather than just make up a hollow plan to get a four-year exemption, it does have to have something to it. But unfortunately, there isn't statutory guidance. That part was somehow forgotten in that piece of legislation, so we're going to try to apply some common sense and good judgment and see where we end up with it. But you're exactly correct. And quite honestly, even in the law, what they call adequate security measures, the full-blown, meeting the full-blown requirements of the law with personnel and security at the entrance, in my opinion, is not secure for the mass situation that could occur. It's not even close.
You know, one of the aspects, too, that I think kind of largely goes unrecognized is not only the safety of the public in these public buildings, but the fact that we've got an awful lot of employees that work in these buildings, and they deserve a measure of being able to attend their workplace in a sense of comfort, not feeling that, you know, boy, is everybody here armed. Because, you know, sometimes things get a bit heated at work and with fellow employees and so on, and sometimes I think it, you know, there's a comfort there. You know, we've had several discussions in our Saline County Salina Board meeting, and that's kind of been always my thought, is that we maybe put, you know, consider employees that this is our workplace, and they're here an awful lot, and I think it also provides different, by taking, just taking the signs off the door and allow everybody to carry, or if you set them up and who, where are secure entrances and not. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this thing, and I've heard from a lot of people. I'm on the board of North Central Regional Planning Commission, and, you know, a lot of the county commissioners that attend those meetings are, you know, concerned about this as well. And everybody pretty much realizes that there's a lot of work left for the legislature to go over on these things. And so just since Commissioner Crawford and I have kind of had the most exposure on this, we've kind of, I think, seen that this four-year exemption is a really good thing because it gives us time to work, work some of the issues out, gives the legislature also time to work out some of maybe the unintended consequences that have come along with their actions, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I've asked our department heads to talk with their employees because if, certainly, you cannot restrict your employees any more than you can the public. And so in order to restrict your employees, you either have to utilize the exemption or you have to do the full-blown adequate security measures at the public entrances. And that makes sense. Ironically, the law allows you, though, to restrict the public entrances and provide that monitoring, but you don't have to do it to the employee entrances, and that doesn't appear to make a lot of sense. Now, don't get me wrong, we have about 460 employees, and I trust them all, but you can make a mistake, you know, one in 1,000, one in 10,000, whatever that might be. And when you look at the history of violence, sometimes it is within the employer and, you know, the folks that are there, and you have to be cognizant of that or between them and someone in the public. So you have to be cognizant of that when you're truly taking safety into consideration. So I'm not even sure what that point was in their law. I really don't get that. And, you know, there's a lot of debate among folks with regards to gun rights and what's safe and what's not, and I think that's okay. I mean, that's what America's about, political debates about these things, that's perfectly fine. And, you know, I'll tell the lawmakers this, where I disagree, I don't get a chance to really disagree with them much, but I think I can do it here safely. Where I disagree is that the people in Salina elect you five to make decisions about the buildings that you own and the buildings you have us occupy. And for the state legislature to decide that a one-size-fits-all approach across Kansas should be made and supersede your authority doesn't make any sense whatsoever, and that's where I think the mistake is made. That's a governance decision that should be made by you and not by them. And that's where I think the problem is. They're taking away your ability to govern, and I don't think that's right.
Well, evidently, they think we need an Andy, so...
They must.
Yep.
But it's there, and so we'll do the best we can. That's really all I have, unless you have any other questions.
I don't, but we could probably go ahead and start taking some comments from our guests out here in the audience.
We're setting through two hours of meeting or whatever this is.
I know a couple of people have been here since we started, but before anyone comes up, if we can take a real quick, like, three-minute break, stretch our legs and use the restroom real quick, and then take public comment, that'd be fantastic. You already snuck off.
I did sneak off.
Can I even make a motion for that?
I don't think she needs a motion, does she? It's her priority.
When you leave, it's...
Yeah.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... we're all taxpayers and we're all citizens. So, those are some things to really consider. And I really appreciate Commissioner Hardy's comments about that sign. I believe that the state legislature, when they debated this, I was in Topeka for, for one day, and they took into consideration the statistics where legal carry citizens do not commit crimes with guns. They're all lawbreakers when they commit crimes, okay? So, the signs don't stop violence. There's no evidence that the sign has ever prevented any gun violence. And I would think that in order to enact something like this, in order to get an exemption or to, to draw on that, you would need some kind of statistics that these signs actually do any good at all. And that's, that's basically my comments.
Thank you, Bob. Does anybody else have any discussion on this, or would like to voice their opinion? Brenda, anything to add? He, he got it all for you.
I, I would just say that there are infringements upon it. I mean, I'm a gun owner, but I also know what fights to pick and what ones to walk away from. There are infringements. I can't own a tank, I can't own a rocket launcher, I can't own a, any aircraft gun. Wish I could, I think it'd be fun. But I can't, because there are infringements. The Supreme Court has looked at different cases and said, nah, maybe it wasn't the intent. Now, I may not agree with that, but, but there are infringements upon that. Just my thing as a gun owner, I, I agree, the, the signs aren't gonna stop anybody. But this is one of those things where I look at a gun owner, I look at other gun owners who have stood up for this and think, why go looking for a problem? Why go looking for a shooting in a courthouse, or a city building, or anything else? Because all that's gonna do is turn the public sympathy against gun owners. So, I'm just saying, you know, maybe we should, in the future, just kind of look at things a little closer, not ask ourselves if we could, but if we should. And I really think this law is more about pandering to the if we could than if we should. And you're right, it's probably not gonna stop anything, it's not gonna change anything that's gonna happen. But gun owners are gonna be blamed the first time that there's gun violence in one of these buildings. They're gonna say, see? I told you so. And this is a fight as a gun owner, I wish that gun owners wouldn't have gone looking for. Just leave it alone. Because at least we could have fallen back and said, hey, you know, they weren't supposed to have it in there. But when we go out there and say, allow it in there, and that legal gun owner who becomes a legal gun owner uses it, they're coming after our guns. So, why go looking for a fight? That's my whole point. Let's just, just pick our battles a little smarter. And my thing is, is this, if you're, if you're a safe gun owner in this building, then you go back and get to your state and you tell them to allow them in schools. If you trust gun owners, and you think that there's no wrong, and there's no risk or anything else, put them in the governor's mansion. Put them in grade schools. If you 100 support, think that signs won't stop things and, and not have them security, then fight the big battles. Fight the unpopular battle. This is an easy one. Throw a bunch of expensive security in front of a, a, a county or city and say, oh, we can't afford it, so we gotta do it. That's an easy battle. Get all those, get those two local guys who voted for it to say, hey, wait a second, I'm an honest gun owner, I've taken six hours of training, I know what I'm doing, I can be a help in need of, of a public shooting, I, I can be there to save the day. Go lobby those guys to allow you to carry those guns in grade schools. That's what I would say to you. If you wanna go looking for a fight that's gonna draw attention to gun owners, and risk our ability to own them and not turn public sentiment against us, go fight those fights. That's all I gotta say.
Good night, Chris.
Feel free.
I don't know if I need the microphone, but I guess it's...
Yeah, for the people at home.
Protocol, or whatever. When drunk drivers kill somebody, they never blame the car. Okay? Do you wanna, do you, do you want outlaw cars?
That's, that's, that's such a...
No. This is apples and apples, Aaron.
That, that's a ridiculous argument.
No, it's not. Why, why are you blaming guns?
I'm not blaming the gun.
So, why do we let the public do it?
I'm not blaming the gun.
We need to, we need to change this argument and quit, quit allowing people to redefine terms.
I'm not blaming the gun at all. I'm saying, allow, if, if you supported this, and again, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm a gun owner, I agree.
And we are, we are working towards getting rid of the signs on school buildings, too, by the way. Because we believe that children will be better protected by people within the building that are armed against some crazy that's not gonna pay attention to the signs, and that's gonna get around the, the metal detectors somehow, because it happens.
Sure.
The guy in Sandy Hook did all that.
Yeah.
You know, he got past all that, and he still did what he wanted to do. One bullet, one single-shot Derringer in the hand of a school teacher could have saved most of those lives.
Right. I agree. I agree. And that's what I'm saying.
So, we are, we are fighting for that. We're not done. It's not a challenge to me, because we're already doing it.
Yeah. I mean, so be good and vocal, and, and get on your local congressman to allow that, and, and ask the governor.
And I think, I think that's why schools were left out of this, for now, because they knew, you know, you, they had to, they had to work out, they had to iron out, anytime legislation like this is passed, they have, they have to iron out the kinks. You know, it can't be written perfectly the first time. And it took, it took years to get where they are.
My, my point to you is, is not that I'm opposed to anything that you're saying. My point is, is think more sometimes about whether you should, more than if you can. Don't, don't look through, if you can see laws, just take away every gun law and everything. I understand...
I'm glad that you're here to point out the fact that I haven't thought about any of this, Aaron.
Yeah, well, I'm, you, you've thought about it, I'm sure. But, like I said, I would just encourage anybody who's, who, who says they support this to get on out and push for that right to carry them in schools, that right to carry them in the governor's mansion, and all the places they have exempted themselves from. Because I think it was a weak attack at cities' individual rights, as you said. And I think it's a weak attempt to try and pander to the NRA and gun supporters while not taking full responsibility for the Pandora's Box that they've opened up. And again, do I think the signs are gonna stop anybody? I do not. But I think that we need to ask ourselves why we went looking for this fight, as, as gun owners. And, and I just hope that they'll use better judgment in the future. And I, I, I hope that the state uses better judgment in the future as they push these things down our throats, before they've even thought things through, before they've thought about what's the definition of a, of a adequate security plan and all these things. Passing legislation before you have the answers is ridiculous, and to push something like this, this big down on us is pretty much unacceptable, so.
My question...
Yeah, oh, yes, of course.
What if, and this, you know, especially with John out here, that's something probably he was wondering, what if, like, county says yes and city says no, or vice versa? This is a city-county building. How, how does that work if the county wants to go one way and the city wants to go another way, when it comes down to the actual voting in a couple years?
Yeah. In, in this particular case, obviously, the building authority board governs this, and this building. And that's, of course, made up of city, county...
Right.
District court representation, and, and person from the citizenry. And that's the structure that's set up, so that's the structure that actually would dictate what happens.
And if you're appointed your city commissioner and your county commissioner, that's on, commissioner, I can't talk, that's on the building authority. If they can't come into an agreement, would it go upstairs?
Well, you have three county commissioners, two city commissioners, you've got the district court representative, and a citizen-at-large, you have seven. So, in the end, you're gonna have, if everybody shows up and everybody votes, you're gonna have a majority, presumably. And that majority carries, I think, as a tenant, you're gonna be subject to that majority.
Right.
So, I'm not sure there's gonna be, there'd be an action that would be legal action if there's a disagreement between city and county.
Right. I was just wondering, you know, when it comes down to it, one says, okay, we're all right with conceal and carry, and the other governing body says, oh, we're not okay with it, then, then what?
Yeah. Ultimately, if, if you're not okay with it, well, majority, I think, probably the short answer is, on the building authority, the majority rules.
Right.
So, that's probably where it ends up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Any other discussion or comment?
Hi, I'm Carolyn Schaefer. I live at 1001 North 10th Street here in Salina, Kansas. And my only concern, I, I'm a gun owner, I've hunted, I've done all that all my life. My only concern, and I believe in conceal and carry, but I don't think that you should just allow it in every building, because not everyone who gets a license to conceal and carry will never commit a crime, or get so angry or upset at some point that something's gonna happen. I feel safer working in a building with the sign up. I know the sign's not gonna stop somebody who's a mass murderer from coming in here with a weapon to, to do that. But I think it will make citizens like you and I stop and think. If there's a sign on that building that says you can't come in here with a gun, most people are not going to, even if they're a conceal-carry person. I just don't feel like it's gonna make my work environment, or any building that I'm in, any safer. In fact, I think it's gonna make it less safe. And that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
And I would agree. I think what she said kind of maybe brings up a bigger point. It's easy to sit here and say, well, everybody who's been an honest gun owner that uses their gun, at that point, is illegal. Well, that makes for good statistics. You can say no honest gun owner's ever done this. But I think exactly the point that she makes is, a person sitting out there looking at that sign on the, on the door may say, well, I don't wanna carry my gun in because there could be an officer in there, and they could ticket me or fine me for carrying my gun into a public building that has that sign. If they, if they're set up and they say, hey, I'm gonna go in there and I'm gonna do damage, that sign ain't gonna do them any good. But if they're just in a state of, hey, I'm gonna go in there and dispute some property argument that I had up in the planning department, oh, I see that sign, I can't take my gun, and they leave it in the car. If it gets heated, I'm not saying everybody who owns a gun, it gets heated, is gonna take it out. But you know, it only takes one. It only takes one. And, and that's my concern. And I know the gun-owning population's saying, how can you be a gun owner and not support this? But I just think that why risk it? Why go looking for the fight? And, and that's the thing. And I think the signs are, are maybe, they're more of a deterrent than we can really measure in the sense that it may keep somebody from getting that gun in here. It, it may put a little extra layer of thought of, like you said, it's not gonna stop the determined shooter. They're gonna come in. That, that, the signs mean nothing, metal detectors mean nothing. They, we see that they shoot up, you know, he'll be the, unfortunately, the first person they take out back there, you know what I mean? And, and so, it, it's, I, I just think that that extra layer of thinking about bringing it in could maybe diffuse that heated situation. People find themselves in those angry situations. I mean, I have a law enforcement background. I mean, they find themselves in that situation, they go, well, I can't remember what happened. Next thing I know, the gun was in my hand, and I was shooting. And that happens. People just lose control.
Right.
And again, I'm not trying to pick on, like, gun owners. I'm not saying that they're any different than any other person. But we're all human, and we all have breaking points. And it's easier for the guy with the gun to commit the crime than the person without it, you know?
Yeah, I, I agree. And if, if the intent of the law was to stop a mass shooting with the full adequate security measures, it cannot do that. So, I, I agree that, and our point at looking at this is not even to focus on that, because it's not practical to do that. But to, to deal with what you, you pointed out, and that's the escalation of violence from someone who's maybe on the fence, someone who's had a really bad day, could've lost a job, had an issue with a spouse, or a friend, or just don't know what the circumstances are. And, and, you know, people often make those mistakes right there at the moment, in the heat of the moment, and then later they say, oh, that's not like me, I should've never done that, I would never do that again. But they do, the more tools they have to make those mistakes, those mistakes can be more severe. So, our focus is going to be on that situation, because that's the most practical situation out there. Still not probable, but it's, it's practical, and as we think about inadequate security plan, that's our focus.
Right. And that would allow your coworker in, in your office, Holly, Aldisys Holly, or Luanne, for an example, they could carry a gun into the office, in their workplace.
If, if the signs come down, if we exempted out, they could not.
Right. That's where my concern is. You know, I, I know, I support conceal and carry, I shoot, I don't own a gun, my husband doesn't trust me with a gun in the house. I would never, I, I wouldn't shoot him. But I, I am an avid...
I don't trust him with a gun.
No, he doesn't trust me with a gun. But I am an avid shooter. I just, I would be concerned if my coworker next to me, you know, who might have just lost her job, or have, getting a divorce, or having something bad happening that day, you know, it's, it's so easy for them to take that out, or someone else is having a bad day that doesn't have a conceal and carry, to reach over and get that gun from them. That's where my concern lies.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of concerns. And, and, you know, and odds are on both sides of the argument, a lot of those things probably will never happen. That's the reality of it. And that's why it's this sort of an ideological thing versus a real safety, it's not a safety bill, it's a safety law. It's really not. And, and, you know, there's, there's, I've heard the point made that says, well, to, to get that permit to carry that concealed weapon, you have to go through training.
Right.
Okay? Even most law enforcement personnel don't go through enough situational training to feel 100% confident if they have to use a weapon, because it normally doesn't happen, except in the larger metropolitan areas where you have to pull a weapon and use it very often. So, and those are the folks, law enforcement, military, are the ones that are most comfortable with weapons. So, if you take a citizen on the street, this isn't about target shooting. This is a situational deal. And, and law enforcement are trained to come in and take the shooter out. They're not necessarily trained right now to ask questions or ask for the ID. So, it creates a lot of other situations that could occur as a result, and, and other hazards, if that ever happens. And like I say, in the end, I think the probabilities, I can't say nothing will ever happen, the probabilities are extremely low for any of those situations. My point is, is, you know, people can have arguments on both sides, and that's okay. I just believe that you're the closest to the people, you're elected, you are the custodian, the steward of the building, should be your decision. That's my argument.
Would it also allow, like, your trash collector and your road maintenance guys to conceal and carry when they're in the city vehicles?
It doesn't regulate the vehicles, and it doesn't appear to regulate, regulate work sites outside of a, a, a building, let's say, or off the site of where a building is located. There's a presumption that if you're on the site where the building's located, and you have a right to carry, if you have a right to carry into a building, you have a right to get it from your personal vehicle to that building.
Right.
But if we're talking about a city vehicle, we believe we have the right to regulate that.
Right.
And, and offsite, like, working in the ride-able type of thing.
Right, yeah. Do we want our guys working on the roads with a gun on their hip, you know, if, if it came down to that?
Right.
John, you've been waiting awfully patiently over there. Thank you.
Well, I wasn't planning on speaking. John Price, 1305 Wayne. It's put us, the legislature's put us in a bad position. I'm not, I'm not against guns, just like you, Aaron. I've got guns, and I don't probably even know where they're at right now. I don't, I'm not a big gun guy, but if somebody came to my house, I'd probably have to say, where's my gun, honey? Maybe she shouldn't know where it's at either. But, uh, we're, we're in a situation here at the county where if, in four years, if we don't take the signs down, and get something worked out with upstairs, we do have a good security upstairs, which is good. And you'll have security over at your police station, which is good. And I think our sheriff should have security at his place, you know? They don't, nobody needs to be carrying a gun into the jail. But if we take it down here, we're gonna have, if we, we're, we're either gonna have to put security upstairs at the front door, and make everybody come around to that front door. And that's just not gonna work in this county. I mean, that, you can't, there's too many doors. There's four doors that you would have to open up, and then you're talking a million dollars worth of spending money. So, what legislature's done is gonna cost the taxpayers a lot of money. I mean, if just our building, a million dollars, think what other things are gonna cost them. So, as a, and they didn't think things out, and I don't know if it's to get votes or what it's for. And I have people that don't like me making these stands, but there's good and there's bad, and, and, but, we were talking about, if you, if you allow, if you open the doors where your people work, you can't stop them from carrying a gun in. They've got a right to carry a gun, too. So, then you've got, now, a lady that has a purse, and they lay it down and walk away from it, boy, that's, they broke the law right there. And they could lose their job. So, it's gonna cause a lot of problems for employees, our people that work in the shop, if, and, you know, we're gonna, they took the sign down, so employees, say, a guy that's working on a tractor all the time, and they're crawling under a truck and a tractor, that gun's gonna fall out, you know? It's not safe. So, they're gonna have to leave it in their car. I mean, it's gonna have to be some right choices for the people. And it just really caused a lot of problems, and legislature didn't even think it out. They just voted. And was it for votes? I don't know. You know, that's what I'd say. That's a lot of votes, Aaron, and, uh, we're just kinda back to the common sense that everything's worked fine in this building, like it is, why do we change it? You know? And like you said, they could carry in a gun. I, you talk about her, I'm, I'm the first one in the door out here when you walk in, if I'm sitting in my place. So, if they take that sign down, should I carry? You know? I'd have the right to. And, you know, there's gonna be a lot of changes. So, at least we've got four years, and, um, it's just so much up in the air. Just like the sheriff, he's just up in the air with it. And it's, uh, I think it's, you shouldn't just make hasty decisions and say, well, they took it down, or, we've got a commissioner, they took it down, and McPherson everywhere, so we need to take it down. Well, that's just not, what other people do isn't, we're responsible for what we do. And as a commissioner, I'm responsible if somebody gets hurt, whether it's on the board of the building or not, we're responsible for it. So, that's, I thought I'd throw that in.
Tough decision. Thanks, John.
[coughs]
Any other discussion on this matter? Do, and do we have any other business?
Before moving along, I'll go ahead. Commissioner Hardy, were you gonna break in here before I make a motion on a executive session?
I was going to ask if someone could reconstruct the discussion about the mayor's Christmas party, how that all came about.
We did get phone calls about that.
Yeah, I'll do my best, and Deon can fill in the blanks if I, if I get this wrong. But it, we've had the same thing for years and years and years. We've had declining attendance. And so, there was, one, one thought was, is do we have it at all? I think that was a consideration, is it a wise use of dollars? Now, a lot of those, most of those dollars, if not all of them, are generated outside and donated for the program. But, you know, it, it's a little different type thing than our typical programs. And there's a lot of other Christmas opportunities from the museum. They had a holiday open house kind of thing, and all over town. So, one could argue it's not even necessary. And I think one can make a pretty reasonable argument. Our thought in thinking about that was, is, well, before we just abandon it, let's try to broaden it, get more people there. So, innocently enough, there was a change, well, there's a change in the programming and some of that. And there was, and I told the media this, there was no letter from ACLU or anything like that. It was just intended to broaden it in, anyway. And it generated, the change in the title did generate quite a bit of discussion. So, we said, okay, fine, it's not a big deal to change it back. There was nothing that compelled us either way. So, the title got changed back. But I think one thing that we do need to do, we don't have to worry about it between now and Christmas, but as we go into next year, it's, it's, it's historically has been a, a, a small, little annual program that, quite honestly, commissioners have really not taken much interest in, as the mayor's title, the mayor's role is varied depending on the mayor. It's been completely limited, or there's been some involvement. So, it's really been more of a little departmental thing. And I think it might make sense to have some thoughts as to, do we even need it? What do we wanna do in future years? Is there a better use of the funds? Mayor Shirley made reference of, one time, of, could you contribute that to an organization that helps people in the community? That's an option, too. There's a lot of options that we probably just need to see and talk about it, see if it's run its course.
I can tell you, next year, everything that the city does will be the mayor's. Something. The mayor's street improvement.
Leading up to the bust.
Yeah.
You know, one of the, one of the concerns I had, one of the concerns I had on this thing was, was just the, you know, I, I had a few calls, and I, I don't think I probably had as many calls as either the city manager's office or the parks department had. But, you know, it, it could have been a miscommunication with the, with the media on this thing, but, you know, there was a reference made in there that, that commissioners were aware that this was taking place, and, and that apparently, I think that leads to the suggestion that nobody seemed to have a problem with it, and that it was just, it kinda went on from there. And then the next thing was, is that it was changed back, and with no input from anybody. So, I think that, and it, and it could be a communication thing, but, but I was completely unaware that, that this was even an issue. And, um, and so, I don't know. I mean, was anybody aware that this was taking place, or was nobody aware that this was taking place? And, I don't know, it just seems like we, there's a severe lack of communication there between either us or us.
Well, I, Commissioner, I think that's an internal decision. It's a department thing. I used to do that all the time in human relations. I mean, we had workshops and things. We didn't go to the commission to see if we could do that. That's, that's, that's just something. And I think this just came about just as a kind of a mistake, really, that...
And that's perfectly okay, except it said that the commission was aware...
Well, I didn't...
That it was happening. And then subsequently, there was an editorial written in the paper that says, what, you've got a table of people sitting around, and it doesn't occur to anybody that, wait, this might create a real backlash from some... this might create a real backlash from some people that..."
I didn't see that part, that the commission knew anything about it.
We were given credit for that.
Oh, well.
And we were not invited.
And the mayor didn't invite us.
Invited in groups of two, right?
Yeah. Insult to injury.
Yeah, I mean, that may have been an oversight. You know, the fact of the matter, this is a small little division operations thing. It's never been considered to be a governing body program or something. And so, it kind of blew up into something no one anticipated. And so, yeah, we did go ahead and change the name back. We put Christmas back in it because there was no intent to take Christmas out of the program or anything. And I just, you know, sometimes you make a decision and you think, "I don't know if that was the best idea." And we learned that a lot of the public says, "That wasn't the best idea." Sometimes they ask, "Do we listen?" And we said, "Yeah, we listen. There was no consequence either way." So, we said, "Let's go ahead and put that back if that's what the public wants." So, I think we fixed it. But I think there's, I think there's a question, is do we, you know, do we really need to do it in future years or not? What's the benefit? That we can talk about later.
Probably the big question is whether or not this is the last year for it. Maybe?
Could be.
Maybe.
I think if there had been discussion, that would have been a question I would have raised, as you mentioned.
Hey, while we're here, when is it? And who can attend? And let's try and, let's get a little advertising time here on the TV box.
Well, first of all, I'll apologize because it's my quote that was in the paper. And he did ask me and I did represent it such that there was communication. Part of that was that back in July, Jason and I had had communication about some different things that we were going to do as a part of that. And through those, I assumed probably wrongly that some of that communication was occurring with folks up there about some of the different things we were going to do with it. So, that's my, that's my mistake. So, I want to own up to that and say, "Yeah, it was my quote." And I apologize that it came the way it did and ultimately, that's my responsibility. So, I'm sorry.
It's okay. When is, so when is the event and who all goes and...
So, ultimately, Dion's the one that waged the war on Christmas in Salina.
I doubt that.